This time I was, um, this is the regular board meeting. President and Board of Trustees, Village Brown, Cook County, Illinois. Today is May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. At this time, I would ask the clerk to take a roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
If we have a quorum present, could we stand up for President Lewis? Could you lead us, Trustee Garcia?
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any approval or corrections of the minutes that the regular board meeting had been hit, uh, that we had on April ninth, two thousand nineteen? Is there any corrections to be made? Make those corrections now. I want to state them. If there are no corrections to be made, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of April the ninth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April the ninth.
A motion by our trustee cap to approve the minutes for April the ninth, two thousand nineteen. Will you second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee cap. Clerk, take a roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. The minutes are approved for April the ninth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the next section is the citizen's speak, so if you have anything you can address the board with, if you will stand up and give us your name, you are not required to give your address unless you want to give it to the clerk privately after the meeting is over. So we'll start with this side. If there are any public comments, uh, you'd like to make a statement, you can stand up from this side. This side. Are there any public comments? Okay. I will ask for a motion to close the meeting for the public.
I motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll second it.
Go on, sir. No, that won't.
I didn't have that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we skipped a section there, sorry, I guess we had to say it. Um, so I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. I will ask for that. And I don't know how to explain that, so, so we need a motion to open the, uh, we need a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Uh, we need a, yeah, we got to go back to trustee cap now, we need a second.
Second.
Second, I try to check them again.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's official, open to the public, so we have a second chance to make a statement. Stand right on this side. Stand right on this side. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Crystal Riles Quintero. I live near one hundred and forty-third and Hoxsey, and I've noticed there's been an uptick in refuse being dumped behind our garage, behind, uh, in that grassy knoll area. And there's been anything from rehab, refuse, there was even a severed dog's head that was found back there.
Oh, my God. Of what?
A severed dog's head.
Oh.
And that was found by someone that was perusing the neighborhood, who was walking their dog at the time.
Well, that's surprising, you heard of it? Did you call a complaint into the office?
Yes, I did. And I was wondering, since there seems to be an uptick in this, in the past two to three years, what can be done about that? I realize that signs are a little deterrent at times. However, could there be some monitoring, something going on? And I'm not talking about the railroad area. I'm talking about the grassy knoll behind, um, one hundred and forty-third and Hoxsey.
And so you mean to the east of your house, not to the north?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, well, that is certainly an issue that, uh, that the police will take some observation of and will continue to try to monitor the area. And if you have, uh, if there are any cameras back there, if anyone has any cameras, uh, from time to time, you do ask the citizens, if you could review those, you know, to try to, uh, to stop that type of behavior. We certainly do not want that in the village, or any way, fashion, or form, so.
I have, uh, pictures right now on my phone, so certainly I can share those.
You don't have a license plate, anything like that?
No, I, unfortunately, I believe, I believe that most of this stuff takes place probably in the middle of the night or in the very early hours of morning.
Okay, uh, and you can leave it off, of course, to whoever's here, but in the meeting if you have something, um, if you have something you'd like to, that is, that would take you up there. Excuse me, let me step up here. All right, thank you.
Do you have the non-emergency number, um, for the police department?
Yes, I do.
It's really?
And often times, I make the report in person.
Okay. And if you see it in, in, uh, going on, then definitely call, so you can give them descriptions of the vehicle, so that maybe they can take it up.
Sure. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment? Well, I will ask for a, a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion by trustee Claybrook to close the meeting to the public. Will you second, please?
I'll second.
Second by trustee cap, the clerk take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
A motion passed, thank you. Well, again, I'd like to say good evening, we certainly appreciate everyone coming. And, um, a few weeks ago, probably a month or so ago now, maybe a little longer than that, everybody in Brown received a letter from the post office, and I reported at the last meeting that it had been followed up. Um, I did speak to a representative there, so they supposed to be, um, um, they issued us another letter with an update. They were saying that basically part of the problem was that, for example, if you live on Goodrich, we normally just put twenty-six-hundred Goodrich, we don't put, well, this is east to west, twenty-six-hundred Goodrich should be east, and they're saying that people are not doing that. Sometime they don't put place, they don't put avenue, they don't put street, and that caused a confusion. And so, uh, before long, we should get an updated letter. They're saying it doesn't matter, and we don't necessarily have to put Chicago in order to get the mail, but the first letter did say that, and it just caused a lot of mass confusion through the years, uh, that's been a lot of, uh, uh, concerns about having Chicago zip code anyway, and of course, that just exacerbated the problem, so. It's, um, the letter, uh, it should be out before long, we hope. Um, we had, uh, speed bumps installed in front of our school today, and trustee Greer can chat on that a little bit more, we should get to her committee. Uh, and the other thing is, um, I mean, Ms. Broski, Ms. Mary Broski, she's the oldest resident of the Village of Brown, she'll be one hundred years old next Thursday.
Wow.
And, uh, she invited the officials to, uh, come to a celebration, it would be on Sunday, at Steve's Restaurant at one hundred and thirty-second in Baltimore and Headwish, and that'd be from, uh, I think it was four to seven P M. I'm sorry, from noon to five, noon to five P M. That'd be at Steve's Lounge in Headwish, one hundred, um, okay, one thirty, two hundred south Baltimore and Chicago and Headwish. Um, well, at the next meeting, we'll probably talk about, uh, our summer youth, uh, program which we intend to implement this year. We're going to go into a negative session to discuss that, so, um, that'll be on the next agenda for the point eight. Um, and the building at one forty-five, uh, uh, twelve tons, you know, the building that we're trying to get them to, uh, get the restaurant there, they're selling tacos there. Uh, right now, it's kind of, uh, developed a snag, they have an issue with, uh, another piece of interstate property, so as soon as they get that resolved, then we should be moving forward on that. So, I will keep the board abreast of that, and I'll give you an update, and soon as I get that in place. And the last thing I have is, um, on the last Saturday, I was invited to Chicago to have breakfast with Mayor Barbara Knightwood, elect, and so we, uh, we had breakfast downtown Chicago, and there is, uh, good, uh, positive people there, and, uh, a lot of people came out to show her that they will have a flag, that they're supporting her, you know, effort. She'll be taking over the twentieth as the mayor of Chicago, and, uh, in some fashion, she'll, we'll be working together, and I think it'll be a good thing for the region. Thank you. At this time, we will give a word from clerk.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The only thing I have is just a reminder that, um, the Secretary of State will be here at the Village Hall on Monday, June third, from ten A M. to two P M., and you will be able to renew your driver's license, your state I D., or, um, your license plate stickers. Also, um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that unfortunately, they will not be able to do the renewals on the real I D.'s. You'll have to go to an actual, um, D M. D. office to have that done. That's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, and the village stickers will be on sale starting June first, which is a Saturday, and the whole month of June will be open, um, on Saturdays for the month of June to sell the stickers.
Nine to twelve, right?
Nine to twelve, yes. And Monday through Thursday, um, nine to five, Friday is still nine to seven.
And that is quick?
Yes.
Thank you, clerk Lou, for your report and that information. A public education, child safety, and well about trustee Greer.
And good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pleased to announce a promotion of Stephen Krylich to the rank of lieutenant on the Burnham, uh, Volunteer Fire Department.
Go ahead and take a little speech, boy.
He's just coming from work, from the, uh, give a little speech.
You can just tell her who you are and what you know from you.
My man, he's a friend.
Women want to take a look at.
I'm Stephen Krylich, um, been on Burnham since two thousand eleven. I've been in the fire service twenty-one years, looking forward to leading this department.
And we'd like to, um, congratulate you again, and we know that you will enjoy your position and do well in it. Pleased to announce a promotion of Mr. Andres Ortiz to EMS coordinator of the Burnham Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department.
My name is Adam Ortiz, I've been with, uh, Burnham Fire Department since two thousand fourteen. I've been in EMS since two thousand ten, uh, looking to pass on my experience that I've learned, uh, through classes, through, uh, hands-on experience through the streets, uh, to, uh, rest our fire department.
And congratulations to you also, Mr. Ortiz. Enjoy your position, we know that you have carried well and be a great leader.
Thank you very much.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not to approve on the following applicants to the Burnham Volunteer Fire Department. Janelle Alice, Humberto Reyes, Mitchell Taz, and William Clayton Guy, pending successful completion of a medical exam.
Anyway, you have them speak.
I told him that you, uh, somebody from the board might have a question or two, but seeing what just occurred, they might be scared to death.
The board having a question?
But have one whatever you like.
The board having a question?
Janelle. Hi, welcome, congratulations. Are you already a firefighter?
No, I'm not.
Oh, well, this would be a great experience for you, and you have great leadership, welcome.
Thank you.
Humberto?
I'd love a question.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Are you already a firefighter?
No.
You have great leadership, and you'll receive excellent training, and, and you're going to be serving a wonderful, wonderful community. The people here are wonderful.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Would you like to say something?
I don't have William Guy, uh, I don't currently have any fire experience, but I'm looking to learn and do my best out here.
And welcome to you also.
Mr. Mayor, board members, uh, Mitchell Taz, uh, been in the fire service almost eleven years now, uh, currently works for the city of Chicago as a paramedic, uh, have a bunch of new experience, um, with SWAT teams, uh, medical and fire, uh, in the area, as well as working very closely with some of the members of the department already, so I hope to be a good asset to the department.
Thank you. Any one of you all, what, um, can you give me one, um, access that you're bringing, that you're bringing to the department?
Yes, ma'am, uh, I've actually been teaching for the Department of Homeland Security for, uh, about eight years now, so I hope to help, uh, Mr. Ortiz and, uh, break some of my medical experience, just to back up what he has learned, and hopefully just expand our EMS knowledge a little bit more.
Absolutely, yep. Okay, thank you so much.
What, uh, Janelle, what town do you live in?
Lightning, Indiana.
Lightning, and, um, Humberto?
Kevin.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Okay.
I'm Kevin in Chicago.
Okay.
Okay, proceed, trustee.
I would like to make a motion to approve on the following applicants to the Burnham Fire Volunteer Fire Department. Ms. Janelle Alice, Humberto Reyes, uh, Mitchell Taz, and William Clayton Guy, pending successful completion of a medical exam.
Trustee Greer has made a motion to make these appointments to the Burnham Volunteer Fire Department, so we need a second, please?
Second.
Second by, I mean, trustee Richardson, did you?
Yes.
Okay. Call, uh, do you call a roll, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed, now you're really blowing it up now.
Yes, uh, and, uh, yes, speed bumps were placed in front of the Burnham School today, and we're very excited about that, and for all those fast, fast speeders that go past the school, they're, they will be slowing down, so we're very excited about that, um, to, to get that done.
And the principal has made several complaints, uh, and there are so many things happening, so we certainly don't want our children to be in any, uh, safe to have, especially if there's something that we can do about it, and we're going to take the next step to do that, and that's what we did, so. I proceed, trustee.
Okay, and, uh, the last on my list today is, um, the second and third Saturday of the month of July will be our annual garage and vendor sale. I'm asking everyone that will be participating, each year's growing more, bigger and bigger, but I'm asking everyone that will be participating, you must bring your own setup, bring your own table, bring your own tent, uh, that, that is a must and a requirement in order to participate in, in our garage sales. Again, they're very exciting, each year, it's a lot of fun. Again, our annual garage and vendor sale, the second and third Saturday in the month of July. And we will be getting signs out and flyers, you will hear lots more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Greer, thank you.
I'm sorry, but, sorry, chief. Um, Burnham Fire and Medical Report, this is for the month of April. There were twenty-one calls, there were ten during the day and eleven during the night, and for ambulance calls, very busy, there were nineteen during the day and nineteen during the night. So, thank you. Okay, thank you so much, that's it.
Okay, trustee, uh, trustee Greer, thank you for the report and your information. Public Works in the building, trustee Claybrook?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of taking, discussion of, consideration of taking action to approve or not approve on the purchase of a twelve-passenger van for our summer youth job youth program that will not exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, and, uh, we anticipate that we will, uh, find even less than twenty thousand dollars, and certainly would not be more than twenty thousand dollars, so we're always in the business of not spending any more than we have to, and some people say I'm kind of cheap, so. They're probably right, they're probably right, so. They're probably right, so we, like, want to preserve the taxpayer money, just like you do at home, so, all right, so we're going to do that, and you got my word on it, so. I proceed, trustee Claybrook.
Okay, I make a motion to approve on the purchase of a twelve-passenger van for our summer youth job youth program that will not exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
And I would like to say, in addition to that, uh, the van would be used for the summer youth program this year, and after that program is done, then, then we'll be turning it over to the water department to help to facilitate and speed up the, um, the process of meeting, um, reading the meetings of both guys and having a meeting in the background, and, uh, and after that, we'd be using for some other purposes, I mean, which I would not reveal, so.
Do you want to discuss after the motion, or discussion's open now?
Discussion's okay now. The motion's, maybe we can discuss.
Okay, so hopefully, we can find something with less than eighty thousand miles for that cost. Um, are you, we gonna have other comps? We don't have any other comps available?
Well, we've looked at, uh, several, and, and we even found one for, I believe it had four to six thousand dollars, looking for where we can get that one done, you know?
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, so we've lost two already, so it's probably safe to say that we're just going to go ahead and go with this one.
Okay. And then, if we are going to utilize this vehicle in the wintertime, it says that it's a rear, rear wheel drive, and we know that those are not good for the wintertime, and that can cause a problem, so if we're going to continue to look, that would be great. Also, um, what happened to our other one, the other van that we used to transport the, uh, the summer workers in?
Oh, that was very old, and we, uh, we just managed.
How long ago?
Four, five years, because I probably.
Four, five, and how long did we have it for?
Um, about five, oh, it was very old, about five, six years, maybe.
We had it for about seven years?
Yeah, five. Okay.
And, and we're looking to have this one about the same amount of time, be able to use it for about seven years?
Well, we're going to probably use it as long as we can, not forget, yeah.
And if we can find something else with less miles, and preferably front-wheel drive and not rear-wheel drive, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay, we certainly, trustee Claybrook and I will probably travel through our, so we'll take it under that if we can, so. Thank you. Are there any other, um, comments?
Yes, um, what type of liability do you want to have by driving the summer kids around in the van?
Well, it's covered under our insurance anyway, but just like any other municipal vehicle, you know, both the police, uh, other work, certified, whatever.
Could we, I'm sorry, sir, I know that you're going to talk more about the summer youth program at the next meeting, but have we already been approved for the grant for that, for that program?
Well, it's really not a grant, it's, uh, when this program was started back in two thousand five, it was started through, um, um, some revenue that I had, um, you know, talked to most of the banks, and at the time, um, you know, they started giving us about ten or eleven thousand dollars a year for the stickers, and then we were, um, uh, supporting summer job program with that additional income. And so sometime people, you know, people have complained that trucks don't have stickers on them, but they don't know that they give us at least eleven thousand dollars, I mean, every year, but, and so they buy about a hundred stickers, so whether they put them on the truck or not, we don't, yeah, so. I mean, that's part of mine, I would talk to the school. Okay, are there any other questions? I proceed, trustee.
Okay. I make a motion to approve on the purchase of a twelve-passenger van for our summer job youth program that will not exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
And as a motion of vote, our trustee Claybrook to be the second to approve the first of this van?
Second.
Second by trustee Rich, so the clerk take a roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Our motion passed, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Yes, um, I have a general resource, um, guide for Illinois seniors, and it's a, uh, it's a guide that has different contact numbers and addresses for, uh, different opportunities for seniors, uh, from anything from telephone bills to, uh, low-income housing, energy assistance programs, weatherization, and things like that, so I have, uh, a few up here if anyone wants to grab them. And also, uh, Public Works has been out doing general cleaning, cutting the, uh, open lots and, uh, keeping our villages clean. And next week, for the first time, well, that I know of in Burnham's history, we'll be celebrating, or not celebrating, but giving, giving, uh, appreciation, giving appreciation to the, uh, Public Works Department, and it's, uh, National Public Works Meet, and it's from May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand nineteen. So, Monday on the twentieth, we probably, uh, have lunch for the guys or something like that, and then if you see the guys out, just wave at them, you know, give them a little appreciation, and, you know, tell them they're doing a good job or whatever, because we do have a small village, but it's only Dwayne and three other guys, you know, so sometimes it can get overwhelming. And, uh, with that, we have something for Dwayne, if you could come up, Dwayne?
I'm up now.
So, we would like to thank you for the dedicated service and, and all that you do, and, you know, sometimes people say, well, you know, all you do is ride around, they have no idea what you do. They have no idea. Right, and then, and then you got to put up with men, sometime that's not easy, you know, and, um, because I never get tired, and I assume no one else knows either, so. Get Texas all through today.
(audience laughing) (audience cheering)
You were gentle with that, too.
(audience laughing)
And then, Dwayne, we have, uh, Dwayne, we have, uh, another three for the guys, and we'll present those on Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Claybrook, congratulations again, Dwayne.
Congratulations.
An ordinance of resolution and plan, and trustee Garcia?
Discussion, good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of taking action to pass or not pass an ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero dash zero zero two, an ordinance of the Village of Burnham term limits for elected officials, an ordinance amending sections two dash three one, two dash one two one, and two dash one sixty-one of the village code of the Village of Burnham to limit the terms of office for elected municipal office in the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois pursuant to the passage of the referendum at the April second, two thousand nineteen, consolidated election.
And we thank the, uh, people for voting for this, uh, for this referendum, it passed overwhelmingly, with a large, large margin, and the people really did speak, and, uh, we certainly appreciate your, uh, support and dedication, and, and, um, we're just very grateful for the people of the community, and, you know, some of us been here, you know, much longer than others, and, um, we're very diligently on the behalf of the people, and, uh, there are a few people that need to get their grass cut, so we'll be watching them now, so. So, we're just asking people just to, uh, I mean, do what we need to do to try to help to keep the community, and we're committed for that, so, um, and attorney, would you like to say something about the, uh?
Basically, this ordinance and the following ordinance are based on a referendum that took place on April second, and, uh, this one is post-term limits on elected officials, and the one following it is to give an exemption for regular stickers for senior citizens, and they redefine senior citizens as those who are over sixty-two, sixty-two years of age, and, uh, veterans, so, uh, these are both culmination of, of the referendum that took place last, uh, second.
My, thank you. And that means after these, uh, three terms, I mean, you're ready to get rid of me for sure, by the end.
That's huge for our veterans also, to be able to, um, to qualify for that, for that free sticker.
I'm sorry?
That's huge, that the veterans will qualify for a free sticker, and, and what did you mention about grass cut? I got kind of confused with that one.
What do you mean?
You had said something about the term limits and grass cutting, and we're going to really watch the people who are grass cutting.
That was for the free senior citizens, and, and Claybrook, I have the more information, he'll pass that along.
The meeting's closed to the public.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you.
Motion to pass ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero zero two, an ordinance of the Village of Burnham term limits for elected officials, an ordinance amending section two dash thirty-one, two dash an ordinance amending section two dash thirty-one, two dash one twenty-one, and two dash one sixty-one of the village code of the village of Burnham to limit the terms of office for elected municipal office in the village of Burnham. State of Illinois pursuant to the passage of the referendum on April second, two thousand and nineteen consolidated election.
When you make a motion. As a motion of vote by trustee Garcia, so pass ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zero dash zero zero two. Um, could we get a second, please?
A second.
Second by trustee Claybust, would you quite take a roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybust?
Yes.
The motion passed. See you, trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass an ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zero dash zero zero three, an ordinance of the village of Burnham except village stickers for senior citizens and veterans. An ordinance amending section eighty-six dash two one six of the village code of the village of Burnham to accept senior citizens and veterans for motor vehicle wheel tax in the village of Burnham, Cook County, State of Illinois pursuant to the passage of referendum at the April second, two thousand and nineteen consolidated election.
And just for clarity purposes, so that means if you are a senior, you know, sixty-two or older, and you're a veteran also, that, that still means that you could only qualify for a single sticker. So I believe that's what the ordinance says, so. Now, if, uh, if you have a car, and your wife has a car, and the second car, and your wife's name, or husband's name, whatever the case might be, I think both of you could qualify. But the car has to be in the name of the person who would get it, you know?
So I make a motion to pass ordinance number two thousand and nineteen dash zeros, zero zero three, an ordinance of the village of Burnham except village stickers for senior citizens and veterans. An ordinance amending section eighty-six dash two one six of the village code of the village of Burnham to accept senior citizens and veterans for motor vehicle wheel tax in the village of Burnham, Cook County, State of Illinois pursuant to the passage of the referendum at the April second, two thousand and nineteen consolidated election.
Trustee Garcia, are you making a?
Me.
We need a second, then?
I'll second it.
I'll second by trustee Cap, would you quite take a roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybust?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. Is that it, trustee?
Uh, just one more thing. Uh, we're, we're having another job fair this Friday at the, at the community center. So if you know anyone that's looking for work, please send them. And it's, um, it's going to be from nine to one P.M. So I have some more information here. We've already had two previous job fairs, and they've been very successful. I think, uh, the last one, we had over a hundred people show up. I think they hired about sixty people from that.
And several people have been hired from the village of Burnham. Several people have been hired from the village of Burnham.
So if you know anyone.